I'd like to call the meeting to order. Would everybody please rise for the pleasure of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one day as the universal, which liberty and justice rule.
Yep, she always wants to do it.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Paul?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hatton?
Here.
Councilmember Whitman?
Here.
Councilmember Starkey?
Here.
Councilmember Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Lamack?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Holstein?
Here.
Mr. Weenthall?
Here.
Mary, have a call.
Thank you very much. I'd like to take a few minutes for silent prayer, sending our condolences to the family of Art Smith, very active member of the Pine Island Ridge community for many, many years, and he just passed recently, and also to the victims of the church assault in Minneapolis. Thank you. We start our meeting off with public comments. This is the first part of the first meeting of each month where residents are encouraged to come forward to speak about various issues. However, you cannot discuss or bring up anything that's on the public hearing, although if I'm not mistaken, there is only one thing on public hearing tonight. So you'd be limited to three minutes to speak, and we come up one at a time. And is there anybody? I believe we filled out two forms. So if you would like to step forward, those of you who filled out the form, please state your name and address.
Hi, good evening. Marie Hayes, 4874 Northeast Second Avenue, Oakland Park, Florida. I wanted to come out and thank the commissioners, Mayor Paul, Vice Mayor, and everyone. We were here last month, and we were able to receive funding from the Police Department State Fundature for First Call for Help, 211 Broward. And you guys have done that for many, many years, and I really wanted to come back and thank each and every one of you and your town for doing that and sharing those funds with us for us to be able to continue to provide the services we provide. And just briefly, there were eighteen, 1,818 callers from Davie last year, and just so you know, there were 4,526 referrals that those callers received. And the top five referrals that they were asking about were housing and support and funding for housing. You may not realize that. Rental assistance, and we gave them resources for Goodman Jewish Family Services, Hope Outreach, Salvation Army, the Family Service Administration, Florida Housing Search. And so of those callers, about one-third of all of your callers were calling about basic needs: housing, food, rent, electricity. And then another third were calling about mental health needs. And I just wanted to share that with you all. And again, this, thank you so much for your support and everything you all are doing. You all are amazing. So, thank you so much.
And thank you for everything that you do for the community. We appreciate it. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Hyona Nering, and I am a freshman at American Hater School Broward, and I'm with the Broward Sierra Group Junior Team, a group of students between 13 to 18 years old who are passionate about environmental protection. The use of fossil fuels is causing long-term harm to our environment, destroying our environment for future generations through pollution. I'm asking for the City of Davie's Council to help address my concerns for our future. I'm here to inform you about our mission and ask for your support on our proclamation to transition Broward County schools into using clean energy by 2030. I've joined the Broward Sierra Group to help the county focus on using cleaner resources. Because the school district is the sixth largest in the country, we're working with them to get environmental changes. Our campaign has already gotten the school board to issue a proclamation in support of energy-efficient practices, and it would be extremely beneficial to us if the City of Davie could make a proclamation in support of the Green Schools campaign. And we've already gotten the City of Coconut Creek and Plantation to also support it. We would really appreciate it if any members of the council would be willing to support it, or the public, by taking a flyer from the campaign, scanning the QR code, and recording their support to our campaign to help future generations lead the way to a safer and cleaner future. You can reach out to us if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are you on the debate team?
I'm in speech and debate, yes.
I figured. Very well presented. And we do do proclamations. If you leave your flyer with the clerk or with Mr. Moss, Mr. Lewis, and if and when we put it on the council, you'll be notified. Thank you. Good job. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Seeing none, then I will close the public hearing portion of the meeting, and we'll go to our presentations. Our first presentation is the Red Light Camera Survey. Is Thomas Demery here? Is he going to be doing that? Chief, you're going to do it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Chief Poland.
Good evening, Mayor, Town Council. Jim Poland, Assistant Police Chief for your Town of Davie Police Department. In 2010, the Town of Davie initiated a program for red light cameras to increase safety. Last year, 2024, Florida Legislature required that, in a public forum presented to you and to the council members, certain data related to the enforcement program. So I'm going to provide to you the requirements of the state statute that we period from July 1st, 2024, till June 30th, 2025. It's just specific numbers and what occurred during the program. So we have a total of 11 cameras at eight different intersections throughout the Town of Davie, and the report requires to present to you total notices of violations issued during that period of time was 17,465. Notice of violations paid were 9,763. Notice of violations contested but pending final outcome are 41. Notice of violations contested and dismissed is 11. Notice of violations contested and upheld is 29. Notice of violation that resulted in uniform traffic citations being issued, 5,106. Notice of violations pending issuance as traffic citations is zero. As required by Section 316.0083, the total amount of red light camera revenue from paid violations collected from July 1st, 2024 to June 30th, 2025, $1,475,030.38. The amount of red light camera revenue remitted to the Department of Revenue between those same dates, as required by this section in 316.0083, Florida statute, was $808,984.19. The amount of red light camera revenue retained by the Town of Davie between those dates, as authorized by Florida State Statute 316.0083, $541,402.32. The amount of revenue retained by the Town of Davie are used to compensate our two traffic enforcement and fraction officers who do all the reviews of the videos, the editing, attended court sessions, anything to do with the special magistrate, also to assist funding our school crossing program. In addition to that, any type of our traffic-related programs, this fund helps satisfy any financial needs for speed cameras or radars or anything they'll do to increase safety. So that's all that state requires. It has to be done on an annual basis from this point forward. If you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer them for you.
Very impressive numbers. But from what you said, so the red light camera continues to be cost-neutral?
Yes, that is correct. Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Oh, of course.
I have one. What about recidivism? Do you find that the people are repeat offenders, so to speak, on every time they go through a red light camera?
So, great question. As far as Town of Davie residents, we have less than 10% recidivism for Town of Davie. The other offenders, 93% of them, one-time offenders. So we're not seeing a repetitive with what we're trying to, you know, obviously change behavior for a long-term basis. So those two stats are very impressive.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, item two.
Mayor, by statute, I'm sure there's no one here to speak on it, but you do have to announce to open it up for public speak, the red light camera survey item.
Oh.
It's by statute.
I didn't have my glasses on.
Sorry.
Okay, on the red light camera, is there anyone from the public who would like to speak? This is a be a public hearing. Seeing none, I'll close the hearing. Thank you. Item number two, something that's been very dear to my heart, and Jeff's got a great announcement to make.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Town Council, administration, staff, members of the public. Jeff Pullman, Director of Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Arts. And tonight I'll be presenting and asking for direction from Town Council for the Town of Davie to host the Vietnam Traveling Wall or Moving Wall in 2026. Excuse me. As you may recall, on June 3rd, Town Council directed staff to assess the feasibility of hosting a temporary Vietnam Memorial Wall in the town in 2026. Staff has since worked in collaboration with the Veterans Coalition of Coral Springs to review the event hosted in May of 2023, engage interest and partnership with the coalition. Tonight I have with me Philip Balaum and Jason Ramsey of the Coral Springs Coalition, probably some familiar faces from our Veterans Breakfast that we do monthly. But they're here tonight to show their support for this initiative, as well as answer any specific questions that you may have following the presentation. July 4th, also this year of 2026, marks the semi-quincentennial, or the 250th anniversary of the signing of the Declaration of Independence. So this would be a great event here hosted in the Town of Davie. There are two walls, with the Vietnam Traveling Wall, and then there's also the Vietnam Memorial Moving Wall, one of which is owned by the All Veterans of Brevard. There's a three-fifth scale and a half-scale model of this memorial wall of the memorial that's in Washington, DC. It stands about six feet tall and is about 250 to 300 feet in length, and the names of the over 58,000 servicemen and women who have given their lives and service to the Vietnam conflict are listed on that wall. The initial cost for rental of the wall is about $8,000. That includes delivery, setup, and breakdown. There's also an estimated about $2,000 in cost for lodging while they're on site. So the town's contractual costs are not anticipated to exceed $10,000 to host the wall here in Davie. We are planning to host this event in partnership as opposed to true sponsorship, so we are looking to partner with the Coral Springs Veteran Coalition, who again do have experience in hosting the Moving Wall and come with a great deal of experience and knowledge and passion for this project. The event will comprise of many shared responsibilities as outlined here on the slide. Again, town responsibilities would include the contribution of $10,000 to pay for the Moving Wall and Lodging. We would use the Bergeron Rodeo Grounds. Town staff would also provide event oversight, some staffing, and obviously collaboration with the coalition. Event marketing and promotion would all go through our PIO office and the town. And then we'd also be inclusive of our Veterans Advisory Committee throughout the planning process leading up to the event, and then with the event activities. The Coral Springs Veteran Coalition responsibilities include the cost for police security and cleaning fees of the arena, which they've committed to raising funds through sponsorships and other donations to help offset that cost for those items. Coordination with the Moving Wall Company and Installation, which they've also had experience with. They would help us build out the event program, as well as the design, and working with the local veterans groups and other organizations to host the event. They would provide some event staffing and volunteers throughout the process, and then also assist with marketing and promotion of the event. We're proposing to host the event at the end of April in 2026, and have confirmed the availability of the wall to host the event. Build-up would come April 23rd and then load out April 28th. It would be open to the public from Friday, April 24th, at 8:00 a.m., 24/7 throughout the evening as well through that Monday, April 27th, at 8:00 a.m. Some of the mock programs would include open public viewing and passive viewing for the public, again on a 24/7 clock. Veteran and active-duty military guest speakers during certain program times, local veteran recognition with a focus on our Davie veterans, as well as Broward County, active-duty military guest speakers again throughout the event, local veteran recognition, like I said, and then the local honor guards here, and working with JROTC, ROTC, Veteran Organizations, and Veteran Affairs Groups throughout the event. Here are some pictures from the event that they assisted with and hosted in 2023, again in Coral Springs. The wall itself comes in on a flatbed trailer and then is assembled by the organization, as well as volunteers, and the coalition has committed to assist with that initiative as well. The Bergeron Rodeo Grounds, as you all are very familiar with, provides an ideal location to host this event. It can be rain or shine. We have restroom facilities, concessions, and everything on-site, so nothing else would have to be brought in for the event, and makes a great location there to host this, especially during our semi-quincentennial or 250th anniversary. So, next steps. If council does support this initiative as laid out tonight, we would direct contract with the rental of the Moving Wall. We would look to secure the dates of that April 23rd to April 27th, being open to the public from the 24th to the 27th. If that date is no longer available, we do have a hold on it, but if it's no longer available, we'll schedule the next feasible available date based on our calendars. And so that brings me to the question is, does Town Council support a partnership event with the Veterans Coalition of Coral Springs to host the Vietnam Traveling Wall in 2026 at the Bergeron Rodeo Grounds? And I'm happy to take any questions, or if Philip or Jason can answer any at this time, we'd be happy to do so.
I have a feeling you have a thumbs up from all of us. I think this is a wonderful, wonderful initiative, and it does fit in with what we've been doing over the years for our veterans, and I think it's commendable. I really appreciate it. So we can get on the phone right away and secure those dates.
I know what I'm doing tomorrow. Thank you.
No wonder. You're all okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for being here, gentlemen. We appreciate it, and we're really going to be looking forward to this. Thank you. Jason wants to say a word, of course.
Jason Ramsey from Plantation. I'm the Vice President of the Coral Springs Veterans Coalition, here with Mr. Philip Balaum, but wanted to say thank you so much for partnering with us and getting ready to kick this off. But one of the big reasons that we were focusing on having this is next year, starting with America being 250 years old, this is a perfect patriotic event, and it poises the Town of Davie to be at the forefront. Thank you for allowing us to do that. We look forward to working with you.
Our pleasure. And the fact that the rodeo arena is adjacent to our Purple Heart Trail will maximize that as well. Thank you. Good job. Now we're going to go to the consent agenda. I'm going to pull number one. Anybody else need to pull anything? May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda minus number one?
Motion to approve consent agenda minus number one.
I'll second that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. Just on number one, I just needed to disclose.
Mayor, I'm sorry. Yeah, were we?
Oh, we had a table first. I'm sorry. Okay. That motion will stand as in relation to the... We'll vote on it when we're finished with this. Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Want me to reconsider?
No, you don't have to, because we didn't draw the vote yet, and you can have discussion. So, that's okay. Am I correct?
So technically, since there's a motion, a second, there's a motion on the table, so technically we should do a roll call. We should do a vote.
Or the motion maker can withdraw the motion.
That is correct as well. Those are both options.
Would you like to withdraw your motion?
Yes, I'll withdraw my motion.
And you withdraw the second. Okay, there we go.
We have followed Robert's rules of order.
Thank you. Okay, on the consent agenda, staff is requesting the following item be tabled to September 17th. It's the building fee schedule. May I have a motion and a second?
Motion to table number two, scheduling to the 17th.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. All the public hearing ones have to be done individually and roll call vote. Staff is requesting the following item to be tabled to November 5th. Ordinance First Reading, Code Amendment Number 17. May I have a motion and a second?
Motion table number 17.
Second.
Code Amendment Number 17.
Code Amendment Number 17, sorry.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman?
Yes.
Councilmember Starkey?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hatton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Number 18, Code Amendment. Staff is requesting this be tabled to November 5th. May I have a motion and a second?
Motion table number 18, Code Amendment, to November 5th.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Starkey?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis? Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hatton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, number 19, Code Amendment. Staff is requesting the item to be tabled to September 17th. May I have a motion and a second?
I'll make a motion to table number 19, Code Amendment. Second.
Roll call.
Vice Mayor Hatton?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Starkey?
Yes.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number 20, Land Use Amendment. Applicant is requesting tabling to September 17th. May I have a motion and a second?
Motion to table number 20, Land Use Amendment to September 17th.
Second.
Roll call.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hatton?
Yes.
Councilmember Starkey?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And number 21, Rezoning, to table to September 17th. Motion and a second, please.
Make a motion to table number 21, Rezoning. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Whitman?
Yes.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Councilmember Starkey?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hatton?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, so good you guys keep me on my toes here. Now, we have a motion to accept the consent agenda minus item one.
Motion to accept the consent agenda minus number one.
I'll second that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. The only reason I pulled this, I wanted to disclose the fact that I sit on the Board of Directors of the Old Davie School, and you wanted to...
Yes, Mayor. So the mayor sits on the Board of Directors for the Old Davie School. It is an unpaid volunteer position. I did the research on the Commission of Ethics. There is no conflict of interest. You may vote on the item.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion to approve number one, the agreement renewal?
Number one, a motion to approve number one agreement renewal.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you very much. Under the public hearings, we have number 16, which is the Capital Improvement Plan. What was that? Somebody drop their tea?
No, that was my, the paper on my phone. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. Just turn your mic off. Mr. Weenthall, would you read the resolution by title, please?
Yes, Mayor. CIP, a resolution to Town of Davie, Florida, approving the 10-year capital improvement program for the Town of Davie for fiscal years 2026 through 2035, providing for conflicts, providing for stability, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. If there are any members of the public who wish to speak, they come forward at this time. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Does Town Council have any questions or concerns for discussion? I just want to mention again that the capital improvement program is set forth by Ms. Henry. It's excellent job. We appreciate the work that went into that. May I have a motion to approve? Number 16, CIP.
Motion to approve. Number 17, CIP.
16.
16. Oh, my old said 17, sorry. 16.
Is there a second? Okay. Can we have a roll call on that, please?
Councilmember Whitman?
Yes.
Councilmember Starkey?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hatton?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And I think everything else has been...
Everything else has been tabled, Mayor.
Has been tabled.
Yes, ma'am.
We have the proclamations for today, the national diaper need awareness. We have the proclamations for today, the National diaper need awareness, National Service Dog Month, Hunger Action Month, National IT Professionals Day, and Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. On the appointments, Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. We have appointments for that? I thought we did that in the last meeting.
There was one more that's going to be added, I think, that was a recommendation to be added to. I think somebody told me about it.
I think it was the list of all the members in there for reappointment.
Right.
Okay, because I thought there was somebody new. I don't know.
So what the question is, are we... We're just approving the list that was presented to us?
If you agree with it, yes.
Yes, if you agree with it.
Okay. Make a motion to approve the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. We have no committee recommendations.
I have one, Mayor.
What?
I have an appointment.
Oh, you have an appointment?
I do. It's about 3 o'clock. 3 o'clock. I have an appointment to... Board and committee appointments. I would like to appoint Shelley Petaveri to the Public Art Advisory Committee.
Oh, okay. I didn't know you had an opening.
I did, yes.
Thank you. Second.
Thank you.
Okay. There's no old business under new business?
Do we have to vote?
I have something on old business, Mayor.
You have something on old business? How do you handle that?
I'm sorry?
I just do it?
Well, let's hear what it is first, and then we'll go from there.
At the last council meeting, I seconded a motion and voted in favor of approving the Martye variants. I have since learned of new information and received clarification on existing information related to the variants. As such, I am making a motion to reconsider variants V25-065 Martye.
Thank you. Okay, what I think, so that you made a motion.
Want me to explain, Mayor?
Yeah, it needs... I'll second it, so...
So, do I want to explain?
Yeah, please explain to everybody exactly what we're going to be doing.
So, we don't do a lot of these, so I'll explain. When council passes an item, they have one week or the next council meeting where the prevailing party, which was Councilmember Lewis, Vice Mayor Hatton, and Councilmember Starkey, they voted to approve the variants. So one of the members who voted to approve, no, it was just the three of you. So one of the members who voted to approve the variants, and it doesn't have to be a variant, it could be another item, at the next council meeting can make a motion to reconsider. So Councilmember Lewis has made a motion to reconsider the variants for Mrs. Marty at the last council meeting. Mayor Paul has seconded, so we'll do a vote, and a vote, a yes vote, would, if there's a majority, would bring the item back at the next town council meeting for reconsideration. So a vote yes is not voting to approve the variants, it's just voting to have the variants heard again at the next town council meeting.
Thank you.
Excuse me, I have a question. It was only three of us that voted yes? I thought Ms. Whitman did too.
No, she voted no. It was a 3-2 vote. It was a 3-2 vote.
Okay, no, thank you.
So if the clerk wants to do a roll call?
Please.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes. I'll explain again. I'll explain again. So a yes vote votes to reconsider the item, so at the next town council meeting, the item will be reheard. That's what a yes vote tonight will do.
Mine's yes.
Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hatton. Councilmember Starkey.
No.
Mayor Paul.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. So this will then go on the agenda? Does it have to be advertised again?
So I will... It will be published with the agenda. I will reach out to Ms. Marty's attorney, and it's only the right thing to do, and make sure that notice is provided to the affected parties. There was a neighbor who was also an affected party. I will reach out to him, and at the next council meeting, the item will be heard again.
When is the next council meeting?
The 17th, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am. The 17th.
Can we table it to another time? Does it have to be the exact next time? Because we have a pretty full agenda on the next 17th meeting, and I got to leave it like 5:00 in the morning for a meeting, a business meeting across.
You can leave early if you need to.
So the...
Yeah, but this is important, so can we please put it at another agenda?
So the motion to reconsider needs to be at the next available council meeting. At the next council meeting, though, you may make a motion to table the item.
Okay. Thank you. Continuing, wow. Never ceases to amaze me. Town number 29, Mr. Lemack.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Your mic's not on?
Yeah, I don't control that. Thank you. Richard Lemack, Town Administrator, thank you. The item before you is regarding a state local bill consideration for a digital billboard to be considered at the farm park. So the Town Council recently approved two new double-faced digital billboards along I-75 for the Boys and Girls Club as a local nonprofit to support services for children at a time when their revenues and grant availability are diminishing while the need is increasing. The other benefits included the town's ability to provide emergency notifications as well as town's events and activities messaging. As this was favorably considered, I wanted to seek your interest in pursuing another double-faced digital board to aid in the operation of the town's public nonprofit Davie Farm Park that would need approval through a state local bill. So I want to share with you this information. The location of the site, and it's shown here on the map, if you look at the circle, the circle depicts 1,000-foot radius from the actual site where you see proposed bill or the less than sign for mathematical purposes. So you have a circle that takes 1,000 feet in any direction from the proposed bill sign, and the outline that you see is the actual farm park as well as the farm park expansion piece. This is... The sign location is on the I-75 corridor. It is located on the farm park expansion piece, which has no deed restrictions. Identifying the proposed site would be the first step in the process as we continue to seek or obtain public feedback through a notice and meeting with residents that are within 1,000 feet of the proposed location. Should direction to proceed be granted, we'll ensure that the meeting results are included in your formal consideration with a resolution should you choose to proceed. As billboards must be on commercially zoned land, the proposal, the proposed site does not meet state requirements. Therefore, we are proposing a local bill to permit this use. This approach, this approach does not change the restriction in the town's ordinance regarding existing billboards. Unlike the Boys and Girls Club billboard, the town will own the land where the billboards will be located. We would then identify a vendor to coordinate the process, construct, manage, and maintain the board. The town would provide a revenue share to offset this cost. It's anticipated that the town could see revenues of approximately $300,000 to $500,000 annually. As we are in the process of issuing building permits right now for the construction of the farm park, time is fast approaching for the consideration of funding sources towards the operating cost. The digital billboards would provide another opportunity to promote the town activities, provide public safety announcement and alerts. This also would include weather-related emergency amber alerts. The proposed billboard is envisioned to have the same restrictions as previously approved the previously approved billboards and would prohibit certain advertising as listed on the slide. So I'd like to now just go over the sequence that we would follow as we explore adding a double-faced digital billboard at the farm park along 75. So if supported, we'll begin with mailing notices and meeting with communities within the 1,000 feet from the proposed site. Following that, there'd be a... There would be a September 29th, 2025, there'd be a pre-legislation workshop. Just so you know, any action taken at that workshop does not bind the Town Council to moving forward. The decision on the digital billboards will not be made until Town Council hears the item on October 15th of 2025. Should Town Council approve the moving forward after that reading, then on October 17th, we'd submit the local bill to the delegation, followed by the 27th, where we would have our first public... They would have their first public hearing, and then the delegation public hearing would have a second hearing on November 13th, 2025. So with that, Mayor, I'm going to turn it back over to you for any deliberation and direction, and be happy to answer any questions anybody might have.
The revenue that you said that would come to the town, that would be exclusively for the maintenance of the farm park?
That's the recommendation. It's ultimately council's choice, how you earmarked that, but I think that knowing that the revenues are going to be well over a million, million and a half dollars for operating, when you consider that we'll have farm animals, and we'll have feed, and we'll have fertilization, and we will have added insurance costs as well as caretaker staffing, et cetera, yeah, and that would be my recommendation, that we would earmark that money.
Okay. You're all for it? You okay? Okay?
Mayor?
Of course.
Well, you've known me for 24 years on this subject, and I do not support billboards. And I'm going to be consistent, although I commend you and Mr. Lemack and staff for looking at ways to expedite our farm park. I can't wait for that to finally come to fruition, and it's something that is near and dear to all of our hearts, and that's something I think is going to be a great project once completed. But I still believe that billboards are a distraction. I still believe that this is more visual pollution as you're trying to drive down the road. It's a distraction, and I'm going to stay consistent with what I've done for 24 years and vote every chance I get against these billboards. So I can't support it at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle, how you feel?
I'm good with it.
Okay.
I'm good, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's see, we have a meeting coming up. Our special assessment meeting is on noon on Monday, September 15th. Don't forget, the Wednesday, October 1st meeting was canceled due to Yom Kippur. Okay, on comments, I'm going to be really fast. I had a wonderful meeting with the principal of Western High School yesterday. We met for a good 40, 45 minutes. Ms. Fedora, she is reaching out to us, and she's been terrific as far as working with us on bringing back the Public Affairs Academy, so I'm very excited about that. So we have that to look forward to, and I'm happy to hear that Leona is going to take the lead on that again, and we appreciate that. I just wanted to mention and send out a congratulations to our Representative Michael Gottlieb, who received a honorable Florida Bar Award, and the person who is honored with the award raises the bar, and the bar is made better because that person is remembered. So we want to congratulate him on the Gulken Award. Can I have one for this? Also, now, the town is currently preparing its 2026 Solid Waste Guide, which includes three shredding events. I want to request Town Council to support the addition of a Household Hazardous Waste, HHW, event to one of the shredding events in the summer of 2026. I've heard from a number of senior citizens who have a great deal of difficulty dealing with the disposal place on... Not Burris. Yeah, I forget the street.
Reese Road?
Reese Road, right. So I'm proposing Pine Island Park possibly for the location of the event, so it's easily accessible. The event would supplement the weekly drop-off available at the facility on Reese Road. Staff is going to have to identify a vendor for the service, and I was told that the cost estimate could be between $30,000 and $40,000, depending on the amount of waste received. I believe that an event held at Pine Island Park is a centralized location, and it allows for, you know, good circulation and stacking. And I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, the town has sufficient funding from its solid waste assessment reserves to fund this event. Is that true?
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions or feedback on this? Would you all support that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. We're going to move forward with that, then. Thank you very much. That's... Susan beat me to it before, but I just wanted to thank Debbie Thomas for the beautiful Davie 10 book. It's a wonderful initiative, and I look forward to the new rebranding of the Transit Oriented Corridor and the Regional Activity Center. I'm looking forward to that. Michelle, would you like to go?
Thank you, Mayor. We're advising the public to check for updates on our website or social media before planning a visit to their local parks, and apologize in advance for any inconvenience caused by these closures. For additional park information, please contact the Davie Park Rangers at 954-275-8504. On Tuesday, September 9th, come join our police officers at the Coffee with a Cop at the Ot Coffee located at 15701 Sheridan Street in southwest ranches between 9:00 and 11:00. September 11th, we have two events taking place. Our first responders opening ceremony, Climb for a Cause, climb 34 floors at the Guitar Hotel at the Seminole Hard Rock starts at 8:30 a.m. Our second event on that date is at Western High School, 9/11 Memorial Service. It starts at 9:00 a.m. Last but not least, happy birthday to all our September babies. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Susan.
Actually, you all covered everything I was going to, so thank you.
Great. Carol?
Thank you, Mayor. The same comment, everything. I just also like to add my congratulations to Debbie. She's done a phenomenal job, very talented young woman we have, so thank you, Debbie.
Thank you, Mayor. Be very brief, quick here. We had that contest for the horses where the artists did, and they did them up, and I don't know if everyone's aware, but I know when you come into Robbins Park, we have one there, and I don't know who put it there, but kudos to you. It was... It's in a perfect place. It looks good. Every time I come in there, I chuckle, it just looks so good sitting there. So I want to thank whoever was responsible for that. That was excellent, and...
There's also another one.
Yeah.
On Flamingo.
Flamingo, yeah. Beautiful, they're gorgeous. Let me segue in, and I have a question. I got the email that on the 31st, that the mosquito control was going to be spraying in Davie. So then I clicked on to the map, and everything you're doing is west of I-75.
There's one little section of Davie.
Yeah, one little section. One little sections. But they're getting western and part of Miramar, and then the ranches. But you can't say you're doing Davie if you're missing 95% of Davie, 98%. Was that a mistake on the mosquito control? Have we said something to them about that?
No, yeah, we're in communications with them. This is their second flyover. They have been in Davie before. We issued notices just a few weeks ago, and they were in more central and western portions of Davie at that time.
Okay, because when I opened that, I concerned me. I'm thinking they're spraying Davie. You're not spraying Davie.
Yeah, no, they're just, they're moving a little further west, but they had already done one cycle here and moved west.
Okay, okay. That's it, Mayor. That's all I have. Thank you.[1742.54]